And, and we're going to, but I can't make the motion. If you want to make the motion tonight or in the next meeting, it has to come from somebody else because I can't make a motion. But I ask since this is more of a whole city council issue for me to chair this committee, and this is on the public notice ordinance. And we've had a lot of correspondence on that. What this is, is the state legislature passed a law saying you do not have to publish it in the public notice section. And Terry, that cost us, what was there, fifteen thousand dollars over? I heard different numbers.
I have it right here from Terry.
Fifteen thousand over three years.
It's, um.
Is that right?
Yeah. Terry, the number for advertisement that he's asked, it's over fifteen thousand over three years, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
It's around five, fifty-three hundred average.
A year?
A year.
Is that just council?
Okay, so that's what we're paying.
Everything. I even went to.
Right now, right now, we're paying it to Mount Vernon News.
That's correct.
And, and in this new law, it could be published either electronically or through some other media.
Yes.
And, and Mike, you had questions. Did someone here want to speak, speak to that?
Um, Jay Allard's here from, he's the CEO of Knox Pages. And he had some input. He offered me on the phone, said he'd bother if we could offer some input with public notices. And if you have time, I'd like to hear from him. We don't have to pass this tonight either. So it's up to you guys.
I'm interested in hearing any information.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, we're good. Thank you, Mike, and thank you, everybody at council for having me. I know that I have four minutes, and I'll try not to take up any more of that time unless you're graceful enough to give me a couple extra. I've been the CEO and either publisher president or CEO of Source Media Properties now for the last 10 years. We were founded in Mansfield, Ohio to cover Richland County, and then shortly thereafter, expanded to cover Knox County with the acquisition of Knox Pages, and subsequently grew to cover Ashland County through Ashland Source. And we're, we've been here in Knox County working diligently since 2017. And around 2017, I started to really study and pay attention to Ohio's public notices clause because I know, from my experience in traditional newspapers, that this is a significant revenue stream for newspapers right now that had been, up until very recently, a de facto monopoly for all intents and purposes. And that had to do with the fact that the Ohio Revised Code defined a newspaper of general circulation in such a way, and the code was written in such a way, that only print newspapers of a certain type, of a certain size, and of a certain circulation could be eligible to receive public notices. Well, over the, over the past couple of decades, as most of, as all of us have been witness to here in Mount Vernon, in a microcosm, but across the country, there are not very many two newspaper towns anymore that qualify for the Ohio Revised Code. Now, the legislature could have done something very simple, which would have introduced competition to the market and kept to, and expanded the ability for councils and government agencies to introduce competition and price competition for value services. And that would have just been to simply expand the definition of a newspaper of general circulation, to include a place like Knox Pages, which doesn't have a paper product. They chose not to go that direction, though. And as, as Mike noted, and as President Hawkins noted, they went a different direction. And now, you were, you have three choices. You can continue down the road that you're on. You can publish your notices to a website that is not very well-defined in the current, the current law that was signed by Governor Dwyane. By the way, that website did not know that it was actually going to be asked to take all of your published public notices, and they don't have a way to do it right now because they're essentially built by scraping newspapers. So if you wanted to send your public notices to this website that exists right now, they don't really have a way to effectively take them. Or you can go through door number three, which is, I think, the legislation that you're considering, which is to say, we're going to publish all of our notices on, in this case, the city's website.
And the city's social media accounts.
And the city's social media accounts. Correct. Thank you for that correction. And that's going to allow you to meet the letter of the law. And I would encourage you to meet the letter of the law. But my concern comes up when I think about, what is the spirit of public notices law? The idea, those statutes were written decades ago, or even hundreds of years ago, when they were introduced. The spirit of those laws was an informed public, an informed electorate. Transparency and sunshine onto the activities of government, whether it be state government, local government, county government. The idea was, people should know what's happening. At the time those laws were written, newspapers had almost 100% market penetration into American households. There was almost no American household that did not have a newspaper or wasn't exposed to a newspaper. So it was an incredibly efficient way to get that information out. You have a much more fragmented market now. And my concern for the citizens of Mount Vernon is very simple. If the city decides to meet only the letter of the law and save $5,300 a year, fifteen thousand dollars over three years, and doesn't think about, how might we use that capital to make sure that our citizens are informed of what's happening? You're staying inside the letter, but you're missing the spirit. And I hope that as you move through this decision-making process around how you're going to actually interact with this new statute, that you think about the investment of fifty-three hundred dollars a year, which, let's be honest, is not that much money, and how that contributes to an informed populace. Honestly, if it comes, if Knox Pages publishes it, great. If we make a few thousand dollars a year from publishing public notices with the city of Mount Vernon, that's fantastic. If you choose another route that reaches a wider audience than the city of Mount Vernon's website, which admittedly probably has the smallest audience of all of your options, that's fine, too. But I just encourage you to think about the spirit of the law and why these public notices laws were put into place in the first place, and what Mount Vernon has in front of it, and what Knox Pages, or what Knox County has in front of it over the next decade or so, which is going to be a lot of public business as a result of what's happening only in Licking County. So thank you. I thank you for your ti, I thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Whatever the parliamentary procedure it is I'm supposed to follow. I yield the floor. So thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Well, here's a concern I have. It came, it came from Todd. Is, previously with the Mount Vernon News, we had about a three-day turnaround before they published. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And now it's like a two-week turnaround?
It's 12 days.
12, well, okay, close. And, and so that, that restricts our timeframe when we want to publish something. And, and it's, if we had to public, do a public notice, we have to do a bidding, we have to do whatever, that's hamstringing this council and this administration as far as timeframe. So that's a concern I have as far as the, the change in policy that the Mount Vernon News has had. Other discussion?
I have, would Knox Pages help us with this, and then what would it cost to do that per year? Is it a cost per notice, or how would that work?
We've talked about this a little bit, but I will admit that I did not build an entire product line at this point. But I can flesh out what, what we think that we would build for you, and what we think we would build for all the municipalities that we cover right now because they're all under the same Ohio statute. I want you to think about a form that anyone in the administration that was authorized to use, could use, like you were placing a classified ad. What is the headline? Where's this coming from? What do you need it to say? Press submit. It would probably, it would go through a, a vetting process so we didn't, so we could assure authenticity of where this was coming from. But we would build sign-in and recaptcha and different technologies in to assure authenticity. And then it would publish virtually immediately. We don't have a printing press that we need to manage a lead time on. It's a very, it could be a very, very simple process. We don't anticipate it being complicated. And since you, and I want to be really clear, since I would assume that you will publish all of these notices on your city website at that point, a lot of the onerous affidavits and proof of publication requirements that are in, that are required by O R C now, they don't really apply as much anymore because you've already met the letter of the law by publishing on your own site. So we anticipated it as being something very user-driven. You probably wouldn't need to talk to a person, and you'd be able to publish virtually on demand. That would be the, that would be the product that we would want to build. And I want to be very clear, I don't have that product built yet because I don't want to build it until I know that there's a possibility that it's going to be used by any of our customers. And I'm in this conversation with every, every city and county that we currently serve in various levels.
So I love Knox Pages, but just my opinion on council is that we should also consider something that is in print. Because not everyone does the internet, and I think that that is our duty to ensure that we provide as many options for informing the citizens as we can. And I think that print is still important. Whether we do that in conjunction with something online with Knox Pages, I think we should still keep that open.
Mr. Hawkins, I have a question.
Yes.
All right. The way this is written, with all the strikeouts and everything else, does it include if we decide to go with Knox Pages and the paper that Fred Mann's printing? Can we do that within this legislation?
This legislation is designed to meet the city's requirements under the Revised Code. Advertising that you would do with Knox Pages, or Knox News, or potentially even still the Mount Vernon News, would be above and beyond that. And council, and so council could make a, a choice to do that, not through these, not through this stuff, but not through this legislation, but through other legislation.
It would have to have legislation.
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean, no, not actually. This is designed to meet our, our requirements under law. So if you're going to do above and beyond that, you could make a decision and appropriate the money and then go from there.
So it doesn't have to be in legislation?
It does not have to.
You wouldn't, here's why you wouldn't want to put more than one location in there. Because if you put that you're going to post it in more than one place, you've got to post it in all those places to make it legal.
And I, I'm kind of supporting what Amber says on having it in writing as well. I, I'm one that follows Knox Pages. Can't say that I follow too much, too much of their ads. But I also heard from a very good source that Melbourne News only prints 2,000 Melbourne papers, Melbourne newspaper, and not all those are circulated. So we're talking a very small number of people in print. So I wouldn't want to, it's Knox News.
Yeah.
Um, I wouldn't, they have a very huge classified, but I, I question spending the money any longer with Melbourne News. But I don't want to exclude the possibilities of what's coming with Knox Pages, Knox News, or any other publication. I don't want to put ourselves, ourselves out of that business.
The other thing to note, that our current spending is based upon what's required of us by the Revised Code. And as he points out, there are certain affidavits and certain other things that we have to have in there. Notices that we would place that would be above and beyond what's required by the Revised Code would not have to have all of the verbiage and the other things. We could tailor what information we were putting out on Knox Pages or in Knox News to just what we needed, just what we wanted to cut out, not what is totally required by the Revised Code, which will be what this legislation is set to do, to meet our requirements under law.
Okay, so this gives us some latitude. The legislature's giving us some latitude not to have to pay this fee. And, and, but we can still go ahead and publish it. So I can't introduce legislation. Does somebody want to take this to a second reading, or take it to a third reading? What's your wishes tonight, and who's going to introduce it?
I would like to see it go to a third reading, especially after the conversation we had tonight.
Okay.
If that's a motion, I'll second that.
Well, well, when we get to the legislative portion of the meeting, we can do that.
We just need somebody to move it to, take it to a third reading.
Understood.
And you don't need a second on taking a third reading, so I just need to take it for a third.
I can do that.
Take a third reading.
And I'm in favor of it, just the way it is.
We're going to adjourn that meeting. Thank you, Tim, for being here and, and your input. Yes, well, now we're going to move to planning and zoning of Mr. Herry to disguise food truck vendor regulations. Mr. Herry?
We're five minutes.
Thank you. Um, six, thirty-seven, close enough. All right. Last meeting we're having on this in my term. I've got some input from some different people on their thoughts. I brought it before council to get thoughts, before we spent time on legislation. I've had input as late as today from another source, but I'll take thoughts from anybody else first. I know, Mel, I got your email. You really like not seeing much change the way we have it right now, correct?
Basically, yes. I, I, I think it's, there's some validity to bringing some people to the table to discuss it. But competition is good, right?
All the way, wears the same gloves.
We need food sources.
My boxers all have their gloves, wait, everybody wears the same gloves.
The food trucks keep traffic off the roads, which is no fun. They, they do kind of help if they are out by the gelled wind, or, you know, aerial, or whatever. They, they do help minimize some of the traffic having to get out on the road. So, but they, they do provide resources for people to get food in Mount Vernon. So I'm, I'm not really in favor of a lot of restrictions. And, and definitely not without bringing people to the table to discuss.
And we did see in the mayor's letter, thank you, I think sent you an email that, possibly after Thanksgiving, bringing in, back in. I told the mayor there's possibly a couple of restaurant owners that I think want to be at that table as well. The fire department talked to Terry Davis, I'll get into that in a minute. He said it'd be wise if he was there as well as the health department. So it's not a done deal, but it is as far as any legislation coming from me. Try and make up a little time. Mr. Ruckman, any comments? None?
Good.
None?
None.
Sir?
I, I'm on record as saying I appreciate the innovation and the service the food trucks have done. And we've talked about with, if they're on private property, then the private property owners, you know, that's their responsibility to decide if they want the food truck on their property or not. So I'm, unless there's something I haven't seen yet, I'm not generally in favor of more restrictions than we have.
Um, what about public property when they were in front of, front of the school?
And I, so I, I talked to Ann Weinstein Page, I'm sorry I started that last name, so I'm just going to call her Ann going forward. And, you know, she's the one that heads up food trucks. I mean, at least the majority come through her. And, you know, when I had a discussion of, you know, did they get permission from this lot, permission from this lot, so on and so forth, she's pretty much saying yes. Okay. So Terry Davis, their fire inspector stopped today to see me. And basically said what I just said, he'd like, he said there should be a meeting, he'd like to be there. He said that he inspects food vendors only if he knows about it. And he said that everybody that Ann has listed, he gets that list. If anybody else would come to town, he doesn't know it. Okay? I do think Ann tries to control that, but not, we're not saying that that doesn't happen. So that answers the question on the fire inspections. Everybody received a letter from the gentleman in Florida that the fear that we could be sued if we do this legislation. My only question is, is how do I get legislation for these other cities if they're going to get sued? They're using their legislation. We're not going there. Now, I found out some interesting things talking to a couple of restaurant owners. And I just, I'm going to leave you with this thought. And Mayor, I hope we do have the meeting. I do appreciate, I'll get your thoughts here in a second. I'm going to talk about Chick-fil-A. Because everyone I think has sat on the radio station says, when's Chick-fil-A, how are you going to get Chick-fil-A to Mount Vernon? When are we going to see Chick-fil-A? And a comment was made, Chick-fil-A drives at least an hour and a half to get here. And they drive an hour and a half back. Drive their food truck, two people in it. Nobody knows how much money they make, or how much money they take. So would Chick-fil-A be willing, and this is not my word, this is what I was, was asked, would Chick-fil-A be willing, when they can come to Mount Vernon and leave without a lot of questions being asked, pass the health inspection, pass the fire inspection, why would they put a million to two million dollars in a brick, stone brick building? That's what the restaurant, that's what the restaurant owner asked me. Why would, and he, he mentioned Chick-fil-A, so I'll use Chick-fil-A. Why would they spend a million to two million dollars? The friendly building that's sitting there empty, I believe the rent was 500 a month? They're five, who are they getting out of that? It's because they wouldn't tear it down. Five thousand dollars a month?
Oh, gosh, I wish I could tell you.
It was a huge number.
It was, it was, yeah, they.
Um.
It wasn't hurt.
For rent. So.
Five thousand a month, yeah.
When these restaurants, the taco place that leaves out of Belleville, and they sit right behind Chipotle, and the other, um, cupzilla likes to sit right across McDonald's, so on and so forth. I think something should be regulated. I think the city of Mount, if somebody knocks on your door, they have to have a permit for most, if somebody wants to sell you insurance, they have to come to this duncy time. If they want to sell, sell you electric aggregation, they have to have a permit. But we're letting the food truck come in and do whatever they want. Mayor, comments?
Uh, yes. Thank you, councilman. And council, the conversation I had with Ann Weinstein Page, it's, right now, it's, we consider it exploratory. Enforcement is always the thing that is the, it's going to come down to, why create something that you can't enforce it? And so it's, it's a difficult thing. However, she understands the, and is sensitive to the brick and mortar stores that are putting in, that are paying the income tax, and are paying the property tax, and are paying all these other things to operate. At the same time, there are options that, that food trucks offer. But she also said this really needs to be concerned with mobile businesses and not just limited to food trucks. There are some other mobile services that would, that probably would be in that same, same measure.
This past weekend, right there in front of Kroger's.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, I, it's, you know, we just, we, we, I think you get the right team together, you get the right stakeholders together, and you start looking at what options are out there. There are communities that are doing it well. There are some communities, as, as she has explained to me, are not doing it very well. And food trucks will not even go back into them, into those, those municipalities, which that's, no, that's, that's their issue. Anyway, so we get, we sit down, and we, we hash it out, and we see what we can come up, what that's going to be somewhere in the middle there. I would imagine that will make everybody unhappy. And everybody happy.
Thank you. Mayor, if you do put that together before my terms up, I would appreciate. And like I said, I can, I think I can get a couple of restaurant owners that have an interest in it to come to the table.
Yeah, yeah. And she said, we need restaurant owners, we need, we need mobile business owners, obviously Terry and, and health department, and of course, Chair of Zoning, you would be involved in that as well.
Thank you.
Well, Ann even takes care of the thing on one side of the a month on the square.
Yeah.
And there are craft vendors there who are mobile craft vendors.
Yeah.
And what about the Van Ammet Festival where we have all those, you know, this, this can open a lot of different things. And we need to make sure we're fair to everybody.
And how, and how do we enforce it?
Well, the thing it is with your festivals.
That's it.
Um, I know this because of being involved with First Friday for so long. First Friday is the one that has the so-called permit to use the square for, in downtown for that festival. Same as so on and so forth for your music and arts. So that falls under them, and it's their, it's up to them then to make sure that they have the health department inspecting, and the fire department inspecting, and those type of things, which I think could be totally written into this legislation forever was, that it wouldn't include them. It would include the cloud, the casual food truck.
The, the, the vendors who come in on the Sundays in the summer do fill out an event permit with us, and so that is on file. And I can't remember if they requested any special services this year or not. Do you recall? No. I think only with, if there were, if they needed to close it off for the, the food truck event, then that, that was it, so.
Okay. Mike, we're cutting into your own time.
I know we are.
So we're going to adjourn that committee. We're going to turn it back over to you with planning and zoning for donation of property.
Okay. Council, this is Resolution 202387. It's the first one in your packet. I will give it a second reading tonight. I am going to ask for the, where it says declare an emergency, be struck out of it. Going forward from there. All right. Mayor, I guess I ask you, or Brian, why do we want this?
Brian?
And we're going to try.
We're talking about, we're talking about the one on Prospect?
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So, back in 1999, Mr. Klein decided to make this development. There are several lots that are, don't have houses on them. The two lots that we're discussing have a large spring, so there's water discharging from the hillside continuously. So we, the way Wes built the subdivision, there's a collector for the spring that then brings it out to the road right-of-way. Well, unless the owner is of the private property is willing to maintain that spring, when that maintenance needs done on a six- or seven-year basis, if it isn't done, then water starts going in other people's houses down the hill. So the discussion here is that these would become property of the stormwater utility, and then the city would do the periodic maintenance to keep the spring going into the pipe and not having it basically get loose and, and run into downhill properties. So he's, the discussion was, he would donate those. If someone were to build a house on it, it's going to be really difficult. If, if an unwavery buyer were to buy this and try to build a house on it, it could cause damage to other people's property or their property. So it's basically.
Should that be a concern of us?
Well, we own the Coqueting River, and we, because we don't want people to buy that and do something with it that would be the detriment to the public. So it's, you're acquiring a water feature that has a parcel number. So that's up to this group to decide. He's made, he has approached me to approach you to say he's willing to donate this. The city, last time, he was in extremely poor health. He gave us a right-of-entry. We did the maintenance on the spring for him last time because of his, he wasn't able to do it.
At our expense or his?
At our expense. It was just the street guys. We went out there in the backhoe for two hours.
And how often is this maintenance?
About every five years.
Okay, so from your professional opinion, question we asked beginning is, what's in it for us? And, and so.
Well, it's a less, so if we don't do the maintenance, or have a way to enter the property to do the maintenance, then the water goes in, is damaging people's property downstream, and then we're getting colts downhill, being downstream. So if you're familiar with that area, you know, Mulberry Street's here, then Prospect, and it, it steps down. So at a minimum, it would be nice to have an easement to enter the property and take care of that. But the spring is in the middle of these two lots, so it's, unless you're willing to build a house on some kind of caissons and do a really expensive build, it's, it doesn't, you know, you wouldn't want someone to build a house in Center Run or in the middle of the Coqueting River. It's, it's a, it's a significant spring coming out of the hillside. So we would be accepting the property, put it in the name of the utility so that it prevents someone from making poor choices and damaging other people's property.
So the city approved this in 1999, correct, the housing development?
Yes.
All right. So we approved them to build on these two lots, correct?
Yes.
Sub vital lot.
Right. They're, the lot, I mean, the subdivision was created, there, the stormwater control system is under the cul-de-sac, and then there's a French drain that was approved that extends out into the lot.
So knowing what you know now with the spring coming out of these two lots, can't we just tell the property owner, you can't build on these two lots? Wouldn't that be a lot cheaper for the taxpayers of Mount Vernon and have them buy two lots that they have no interest in?
Well, we're not going to buy anything. This is a donation.
Or not, I don't need buy. It's cost you every time you take care of it. Costs you for. Costs you for the upkeep. The car could cost us two or three hours of digging with the backhoe.
But we're protecting other people's.
Yeah.
But can we, can we legally say you can't build on these lots now because of the water damage?
Well, it's not necessarily water damage, I mean, they're, I, I don't know, I looked at Rob, but it's a buildable lot.
It, it's a buildable lot, and so if they can engineer it correctly, they might be able to do it. But, you know, we've dealt with the, it's over on High Street with water coming out of one of the, uh, down one of the alleys. And we continually, and this, and it's taken up a lot of this council's time, even though that's not something, you know, we could do. So it seems to me that the suggestion here is that we accept the donation of these lots, we keep the drain clean, and we avoid a lot of other problems down the road.
That makes sense to me, we already have problems with, uh, I've lost the, the, over by your area, um, the retention ponds that are on private property that are causing us problems that, you know, that we need to get on and maintain. If this is an opportunity, I mean, I re- recognize it'll be some, some small expense every five years. But, uh, if we can start to take control of some of this stormwater and, um, so that the, we don't have these issues where, you know, people die and the paperwork's not done right. And, um, you know, I think it's probably a good thing, at least from my point of view.
But the bottom line is, if they build on it or not, the problem's still there.
Yeah.
Yeah, you still have to fix it, even if there's no, no buildings on it, and somebody has to do, so. He has no interest in, in just maintaining it, uh, with no properties on it. I can't sell it, if I, a logical person wouldn't want to buy it.
Right.
And, and so, are we protecting the people down below? Is, is, is the bottom line is what I'm saying, are we protecting some of our citizens by spending a few bucks to keep the spring control?
Worst scenario, what could happen to that that would make us put a lot of money into it?
Well, so, so say someone builds on it and they divert the spring to the north and discharge it to someone else's property, and then we would have to, then perhaps the city gets struggling to make a public sewer, storm sewer, and has to build a pipe. You know, if it isn't diverted to the south, if it's diverted to the north, there's no pipe there. So if the owner were to divert it away from the collector drain, we may be compelled to build some kind of a public system. Other houses, existing houses could be damaged if this is diverted naturally or unnaturally.
So you feel like the risk is lower by the city controlling the property?
Yes. If we control it, Wes built a collector to where the water has the proper size and proper opening. And if you build a house, it would be very easy to divert this in a different direction intentionally or unintentionally, so.
Does the, does it, does the spring drain into the stormwater right now?
It goes into the stormwater system that Wes built, yes. And then it leaves in a controlled fashion to the public system.
I, it just makes sense to do this.
All right, I'm going to, just like I said, I'm going to give this a second reading. Um, we can decide.
Well, I, I just want to go on record, I definitely don't think the city should be helping this guy maintain this private stormwater if we don't own it.
That's, it is a problem.
Well, but so the, the idea of the maintenance was partly in the public right of way and partly on his property. So, you know, the cul-de-sac, if you look at the plat, is, part of this collector drain is on public property. So we've also done some emergency maintenance for others, so.
Let's, um, give us ten more minutes in the next meeting if we could. Greg, I'm going to give you, um, fill out a form there, between meetings, we'll let you speak on matters like you did last time, okay?
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're back on time.
Look at that.
Yeah, just so I can do another one.
So, we're going to adjourn that meeting, we're going to go back to planning and zoning to discuss the Upper Gilcrest, Upper Gilcrest Road rezoning. Mr. Hay.
One minute. Okay. Counsel, this is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash forty-two in your packet. It would be the second to the last one, I believe, third to the last. Um, this went through zoning, or excuse me, municipal planning, municipal planning did approve it, the, what they approved was most of this land is, was R1, and they wanted it changed to PND, there was a small piece that was PND. We have Patrick Mackey here from Lemon Development. I'm going to ask Mr. Mackey to come up, he's going to do a short presentation. Um, we have a public hearing for this at the next meeting that has been advertised, um, and he'll be back again for that. Mr. Mackey?
Thank you very much, good evening. Uh, as I just said, my name is Patrick Mackey, I'm with Lemon, Lemon Development, Director of Operations with Lemon. So first, we're excited for the potential to bring another project to the city of Mount Vernon. Our last project was the Danbury of Mount Vernon, which opened in August of twenty twenty-two. And the development process in that first year of operations with, uh, with the project has exceeded our expectations, which is why we are so eager to bring another project to Mount Vernon, to the Mount Vernon area. As Councilman just said, we are in contract to purchase, purchase the parcel adjacent to the Rockford Homes project. So we seek to approve the, or we seek to approve the thirty-three point eight nine acres in Upper Gilcrest as a planned neighborhood district. As I just said, the current zoning is a mix of R1 and single-family. Before I go into a bit of the project, in case you are unfamiliar with Lemon Development, I'll give you a little bit of background. So Lemon Development was started in nineteen seventy-six by our CEO and founder, Bill Lemon. Our experience, our development experience includes residential land development, retail, multifamily senior living projects throughout northeastern and central Ohio. Specifically, when it comes to senior living, since nineteen ninety-seven, Lemon has developed twenty-three senior living projects, and that's over twenty-three hundred senior living units. The proposed community on Upper Gilcrest would be a fifty-five-plus age-targeted, age-targeted, I'm sorry, age-targeted, include duplex villas, four and eight-unit single-story apartments, and a community clubhouse. Aside from the eight-unit apartments, all units would have attached garages. Our concept plan currently shows a total unit count of a hundred and fifty-six. These are concepts that have not been finalized, the market conditions are going to influence our final design. Our estimated rents will range between, I'm sorry, estimated rents will be approximately a dollar seventy-five per square foot. And the units will range from approximately a seven-hundred-square-foot one-bedroom apartment to a thirteen-hundred-square-foot two-bedroom villa with an attached garage. The estimated development and construction costs for the community will likely be between thirty to thirty-two million dollars. Brookwood Management, our affiliated company, will serve as the property manager. And just for reference, Brookwood currently manages nearly fifteen hundred multifamily units right now. The community amenities will include a clubhouse, uh, the concept that should be included in your packet, uh, depicts a pool. However, we have yet to finalize this. As we proceed in the design phase, we will consider a range of amenities and services to enhance the quality of life for our residents. And I'll take any questions you have about the project or a potential project.
We can take a deep breath, give us a little bit more if you want.
Sure.
If you have anything you want to add to it, I mean, you are part of, I guess some of the questions I remember we sat down, these are all, um, one-story, correct?
Yes, sir.
Um, and if I looked, this is going to be one entrance on the Upper Gilcrest Road?
Yeah, that's currently we have, it's one point of access right now.
That'd probably be the only point left, you bought property somewhere out of Weasel out the back, right?
Correct.
Um, questions, counsel?
So I don't see, um, the design plan in our packet, is that something that we could get?
Sure, I may have a couple copies here.
Um, it's not in this packet, it's, um.
I think it was the municipal planning packet.
But I figured for some people this.
I remember seeing something.
It was, yeah, it was in the municipal planning commission packet we had last time, so I apologize for that.
So this is just north of where Rockford?
It's adjacent to it, it's very next to it, so thirty-three point eight nine acres next to it. Yes, sir.
Hundred and fifty-six units, we've had this conversation. My concern is traffic count.
Sure.
Um, Chautauqua Avenue. I know we're developing Upper Gilcrest Road with Tiff money. Your targeted age, I assume is?
Fifty-five plus.
It's actually, that's a requirement of the community, isn't it?
It's now a requirement, where it's age-targeted, so, but there'll be, the amenities, the type of living environment will be geared towards those.
So I didn't do quick enough ma- uh, math on the rent, do you know what that breaks down to for your one-bedroom, two-bedroom?
Uh, yeah, it will, rent, rent will range between about twelve hundred dollars a month to twenty-three hundred dollars per month.
So is it, it's safe to say at least one car per pot, possibly two for a lot of them, correct?
Yes, sir.
Three hundred more vehicles.
If every person over fifty-five plus has a vehicle.
How do you? How? I guess what I still fight with, what about the forty-year-old, I, I mean, why wouldn't a forty-year-old live there?
They could, I mean, if they want to, but again, just how the, the community will be designed, the amenities are a part of it, will be geared towards a certain type of demographic, specifically fifty-five, empty nesters, fifty-five plus, people that maybe want to have less maintenance towards their housing or looking to downgrade, or downsize, sorry.
Is that on, onsite property management?
Yes, sir.
Councilman, if you'd like, I can, I found the graphic, if you want me to put it up on the monitors here.
No.
And does this, there's no like monthly assessment? So the twelve hundred to twenty-three hundred, they're not paying a, a monthly assessment fee for mowing and maintenance and all that?
No, no, I mean, that'll be all part of the final rent.
How many units?
I'm sorry, do you do the own, your own plowing of the streets back through there, or is this?
Well, so we do have maintenance, Brookwood Management, which is a company we're affiliated with, um, does have its own maintenance team. That will probably depend on, based on how, how we finally designed this. But, yeah, we're, currently all Brookwood Management multifamily units, multifamily communities have their own, uh, maintenance crew that works on them.
So would we be plowing the streets or you?
There'd be private streets.
How many units were in your prior development here in Mount Vernon?
The Danbury Senior Living? So Danbury Senior Living is an eighty-one-unit assisted living facility with seven independent living villas.
Is this a gated thing then?
No.
Okay. And it's all single level?
Yes, sir.
Right, that's what you said.
Are animals going to be allowed in there?
Yeah, we typically, in our, our independent living, our multifamily, we allow, depends on, again, that will come down to how we finally design it, but, yeah, we allow animals.
Have you built anything like this elsewhere?
This specifically, so this is kind of what people are looking nowadays, call active adult. Um, you know, we obviously built a ton of multifamily communities and senior living communities. On the last several Danbury Senior Living communities that we built, we also included independent living villas, which were a type of, the Danbury, Mount Vernon has seven of those. So this would be basically an expansion of that concept.
So do you have anywhere that you've done an expansion of that concept that we would possibly see online?
Um, well, Grove, the Danbury, I'm sorry, uh, Grove City Traditions right now is, has thirty independent living villas under construction next to the residential care facility.
Is the plan to build everything at once?
No, this would be most likely broken up into at least two phases.
Can you, what, what would the phases be on the picture there?
I mean, that, again, that would come down to final design, but I think it'd probably, look at having this section here completed first, then that, that's what preliminary discussions have been. But that'll come down to, you know, if we are fortunate enough to get through this process and get the proper zoning, then we'll get into the comprehensive plan development phase, and that's when all of this will be flushed out.
How many acres is this plot altogether?
Thirty-three point eight nine. And that's another thing about the PND, um, one, again, it's R1 and PND right now. I believe the R1 density is four units per acre, we're looking at here doing four point seven, so it's not a, a large stretch. But what the PND obviously provides you is a little bit more level, I think, of comfort and control over, you know, whatever we get approved is what we're building. It's not going to be a bait and switch situation, you know, what council will see will be what the, what the plan will be moving forward.
So we have a home directly north of that. I believe that's a white speck in the forest, the gentleman sitting in the audience lives there. Um, do we have any plans of how we were going to?
Buffering?
Buffer it?
I mean, similar to, I think, I believe Rockford Homes is pretty amenable to working with the neighbors, as would we. Uh, again, once we do, if we get through this process, we have a comprehensive plan, that landscape plan will be a part of that. So we'd be willing to discuss, but I think as you'll see in the plan, there is still quite a bit of green space. But, yeah, absolutely, we work with residents on buffering and.
You know, you talk car lights, when that came up, we were doing the Eastern Star, was, you know, with the neighbors, the light, you know, lights coming off the cars going in and out. So I'd like, you know, in your plan to consider what type of buffering might best block most of that.
Okay.
So this complex, you're not talking, you're talking basically then, few kids, children?
Well, again, it'll be age-targeted, but, yeah, we're not, not allowing children. But, um, I think we were talking about the planning commission too, that one, multifamily units typically don't lend itself to a, a lot of children, uh, especially ones that are target, age-targeted fifty-five plus. So, you know, I don't, I think last time I used a statistic um, about students per multifamily households, the National Multifamily Housing Council from the twenty-twenty-one American Council Survey with the US Census Bureau. Says fourteen point two percent of multifamily households have school-aged children. And then multifamily communities built between two thousand and ten to two thousand and nineteen, so new communities. That number goes down to ten point eight percent of these apartment households have school-aged children. And that's not age-targeted communities, uh, like we're talking about here.
You go through a PND, it goes back to municipal planning, how many trips you think and what type of things you think are going to be presented to municipal planning as, as you progress with this?
Well, I mean, our target, obviously, uh, to have the, the zoning, uh, completed by before the end of this calendar year. And then once we do that, we'll go into comprehensive plan. Uh, you know, early twenty twenty-four, we'd like to be back in funding municipal planning commission, and then obviously go through the process with city council. You know, we're, we're now, we're in, you know, we're have this under contract, we're in a due diligence phase, but that obviously has a, you know, a timeline on that as well, too.
You going to have a swimming pool there?
So we have that depicted there, uh, as I was saying earlier, uh, you know, right now it's kind of a concept. When we get to the planning, the actual development, we'll look at, you know, what amenities do we think will best service or the type of residents that we're looking for? Uh, so whether it be a bike path, a walking path, pickleball courts, tennis court, uh, multi, uh, workout facility, things like that.
This is a question more for Brian, um, I think, Brian. Municipal planning, excuse me, regional planning, um, that I attended their meetings. Hillier Township just added something to their regs about when something like this would go in, with the concern of how it's turned back over to the, uh, township to have to take care of it. So I assume we have some kind of contract when they say it's all going to be private roads, that, it's in writing that they're taking care of everything. Do we have, like I said, take Apple Valley for instance, it was all going to be taken care of by private, and it all of a sudden was a mess for years. Is there a, is there a happier possibility this could be put back in the hands of City of Malvern sometime, right?
Well, but again, that would, so, in the process, we, you were talking about going to our planning commission and having it plotted or agreed upon in this planned neighborhood, that is the process. So if later, say, they decide, hey, we, like, Schleyball did the same thing, hey, they're like, this cul-de-sac's going to be private. And they're like, no, 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 actually, just kidding, we want it to be public. Well, then it has to be built to our standards, so they had to redesign the, and then rerun it.
Which is where I was going, so will this be built to our standards to begin with?
Well, that's up to them.
And if it's not, we don't have to accept it.
So the most noticeable one is the driveway to Walmart. Not built to our standards, they want to give it to us, we're not going to take it. Because it doesn't meet our standards and we're not maintaining it.
That's what Hillier Township was trying to avoid, they said, Ralph and Gitgo, you got to build to our standards, because the way, the way they talk, we're going, we know we're going to get it sooner or later.
Right, and again, like if you're, if we look across the street, Colonial Woods, that is, their HOA maintains it. And it's, there's, you know, they would have to petition the city to turn it over. And we would not be, it would have to be, you know, through the plating process, which would mean, you know, the planning commission, everyone would have, because this is PND, the planning commission would have to approve that, and then the, the plan would have to come back to city council. So there are many steps to prevent us from having to take care of these roads. Just like, hey, it's yours, they can't just say, it's, it's.
Same thing happened back in the seventies with Apple Valley, Apple Valley had fifty, fifty-five miles of road. And they had to build it before the county would accept it, and they had to build it to a certain standard. And, and that, that's a massive, uh, project that they did, and they, and they did it, but they had to meet the standard.
Yep. So it's, it's best to make those decisions upfront. So I believe, you know, we know what their, their choice is, questions?
Kelvin drove down here from Canton, so.
Very nice.
Have questions when he's gone.
Did you eat at a food truck? Just kidding.
Water, water sewer maintained, is it going to be like Rockford Homes or?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, they, uh, they're not allowed to build private sewers, so the sewer would be, the sewer. So the, they're not allowed to build private sewers, so the sewer would be, the sewer and water would meet all of our standards, or we wouldn't give them service. So the minimum, the water has to be public. It's possible that the water line could go through the site and connect with Rockford. In that case, we'd make it public. If it's that ended, they would, it'd be their responsibility, so there's a couple.
Our sewers are big enough out that way without spending a ton of money out of the city's pocket to?
Yep.
Upgrade?
This, the sewer was sized for the entire property, so, and it goes down through the, the state. So what the Slayball team built was sized to service this whole, whole property. That was an agreement the mayor brokered with them in the beginning is, don't put a sewer in that we're gonna have to dig up and replace, so.
And I know the one question everybody asked, and I know the answer, but I'll have you do it publicly. Water runoff, you know, everybody says every time you build up on the hill, the water runs down creek off of.
Center Run? Center Run?
Center Run, Dave, what's the other little one?
Adam's Run.
Adam's Run.
Yep.
But, given the, given the percentage theory here, the percentage of water runoff now compared to what it will be later?
Well, so we are not offering anyone in the center run watershed any variances, so they have to meet the letter of the EPA standard and the city standard, which basically you have to keep the site with a similar runoff as when it was at Cornfield for the development. So they have to calculate the runoff as a green site, and then they have to mimic that in the critical storm method and the water quality, water quantity. So we're not offering any variances, so we've explained to everyone in the first meeting that you have to meet the standards and don't call us and ask for a variance, because we do have citizens that are, that have flooding on a reasonably regular basis on center run, and we don't want to make that any worse. And everyone has been able to meet the standards so far.
Unless anybody has any questions, I'm gonna cut this gentleman loose. Won't be a decision made after you leave, um, like I said, we'll bring this to an end at the next meeting.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
One of our local teams was at Perry up in Canton and, and won this, this, this past Friday. They're still in the state football.
Well, congratulations, that's good.
Adjourned.
We're adjourned, and we're now in recess until seven-thirty PM. We begin the legislative portion of the meeting. I now have seven-thirty PM, gonna call the legislative portion of the November thirteenth meeting, two thousand and twenty-three, to order. Mr. Hill, please call the roll.
Mr. Hillier?
Here.
Mrs. Seville?
Here.
Mr. Severance?
Here.
Mr. Mayhem?
Here.
Mrs. Woods?
Here.
Mr. Ruckman?
Here.
Ms. Keener?
Here.
We are in session. The invocation this evening will be given by Bill Bridges, Chaplain Colonel, the United States Air Force Reserve, Ohio Air National Guard, retired.
Thank you for the honor this evening, Captain, and for representing the veterans of Mount Vernon. It is an honor indeed. Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, it is indeed with deep gratitude in our hearts that we come to you at this time and in this place. We stand between Veterans Day and Thanksgiving Day. So our thoughts go to those who have served us in harm's way, to protect the freedoms that we hold so dear, and have in fact each of them signed a blank check on their lives to do so. We tonight especially remember those fourteen individuals from Knox County who paid the highest price for those freedoms and who are memorialized just a few yards from where we're now gathered. God bless their memories and their families. God bless their memories and their families. We indeed live in a shattered world. We cry peace, peace, but there is no peace. Bringing terror to those who are innocent seems to be the norm. But your word reminds us that you should not be afraid of the terror by night, nor of the arrow that flies by day, nor of the pestilence that walks in darkness, nor of the destruction that lays waste at noonday. So may you, the God of peace, bring peace to this unbalanced world and may you protect those who stand in harm's way tonight for our own protection. As we near the time we pause for Thanksgiving, we express our gratitude for the privilege we have of living in the United States of America and for the community of Mount Vernon. Bless and protect our first responders of all kinds. We're grateful for them. We ask that you give special guidance and wisdom to our leaders who regularly gather in this place, this room, from the mayor to each member of the council to each support staff member. May they all be aware that your thumb is in their back. May they know that their help comes from the Lord who made heaven and earth. So our prayer is, may the words of our mouths and the meditations of our hearts be acceptable in your sight, O Lord, our strength and our redeemer. In your most holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Colonel Bridges, and for your service and for those who served with you. Had the opportunity Saturday to be at the high state football game and at halftime they had the most chilling tribute through all the branches of service and it was if too bad they don't see that on TV because they go to commercials, but if you can see that on YouTube or something to see what they did for our military and the tribute they gave to them, it was outstanding.
I deliver this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Council on your packets are the minutes from the October twenty-third meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Now I'd ask for motion for approval.
So move second.
And moved to second. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. They are approved. Mr. Hill, any petitions or communications?
We have one communication that was received via email this afternoon at three forty-two P M. This is from Linda and Robert Beck of Ten Woodside Drive, Mount Vernon. We do not believe there is any justifiable cause to add the quote declaring an emergency clause unquote to zoning change legislation. That clause should only be added when it is a true emergency. Otherwise, it is removing the legal right of the citizens of Mount Vernon to petition to change the approved legislation. Please read this and make it part of the November thirteen twenty twenty-three meeting minutes. Regards, Linda and Bob Beck.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Council on your packets were three committee reports for your review. I see no liquor control licenses or proclamations. I have one person wanting to speak on matters of city concern, and that is Greg Culberson. Greg, please come to the podium. And you have four minutes to speak. Since there's only one person speaking tonight, if you need an additional four minutes, you can appeal that request to council.
Could I appeal that now?
No.
Or after the court? I don't know that legality.
I'll let you know when the four minutes are up and then you can ask then.
Roger that. Is that going to hit the camera right?
Ask him in the back.
Is that going to hit the camera right?
Uh.
Should I curve it?
Yeah, curve it a little bit.
All right.
Towards the podium, please.
Towards the podium?
Yep.
Where's the camera? Is that one?
Yeah.
More?
Yep, you're good.
Thank you, sir.
You say your name and address, Greg?
Greg Culberson, nine thousand Martinsburg Road. First off, I wanted to ask, do we have a Mount Vernon zoning code and subdivision regulations? I've had this since two thousand twelve. I've been reviewing this for that long. Need to know if we got an updated one soon. Thank you. All right, let's get into it. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Greg Culberson here again. I am here tonight to speak on a game plan to help with our community needs. First, we need to recalibrate our thought process on what is truly needed at this time. We do need housing. I will not deny that one bit. I strongly suggest we pump the brakes in a manner on how it is being done as of today. Please take this as constructive criticism. We are building out of a developer handbook from the nineteen nineties when the growth bubbles were small and easy to live with. Building housing developments outward is destroying our most valuable resource, land. Trust me when I say this, we need to take the advice of Brian Ball, our city engineer. We need to get focused on our infrastructure and get everything in order before we open up the floodgates if we do. Brian is very wise and visually sees the generational impacts as well as the present day needs. I strongly feel the engineering department needs more funding. We have ample amount of roads to widen, create, reroute, that we need to minimize traffic growth right now. East is overwhelmed with traffic. West needs to be appreciated. North could use some more sidewalks. South needs restaurants, human conveniences, definitely housing. I know of three elementary schools that are pushing the hundred year mark. There's plenty to take on without adding population at alarming numbers right now. So I come to you tonight to pitch an idea to you, Malvernham Community. I am going to push an envelope to extremes we only see in dreams. My development company name is Al Creek Development Company. From here on out, we will be referred to as OCD. Our mission at OCD is to pump as much money as possible back into you, our community. OCD is a young, up and coming group, and we are growing like wildfire. No social media needed when you grab the audience's attention by word of mouth. We have MKC Architect Firm out of Columbus. They have been bringing our visions to visual concepts and killing it. OCD has a handful of contractors from the area, ready to go and looking for more. We have several projects that we are working on simultaneously in the design phase, but ready to implement when you are. Contractors and builders, if you need certified, please contact Knox County Career Center or Knox Tech Center. Kim Williams, the director of the Knox Tech Center, is ready and waiting to help you get certified in your area of expertise. OCD has offered to work with KTC to meet their expanding needs. OCD will be exhausting local talent before outsourcing, and local means Knox County, not just inside Mount Vernon City. We want you to keep the money here for as long as we can. I have acquired out of state private funding, if our community needs it, from an investment firm. Money wasn't the hardest thing I had to do, not at all. This idea sells itself to an investor. The hardest thing is to convince you to believe in OCD. Are you ready for the sequel of the Field of Dreams? We all recall the phrase, if you build it, they will come. Ten years ago on this day, November thirteenth, two thousand thirteen, we witnessed history in Malvernham. Majority was opposed to the vision, but now it is a piece of downtown's attractions, the Grand Hotel. Well, it's time to get us up to speed and save our resources. Mount Vernon, would you accept these types of structures?
Greg's four minutes is up. Does council want to extend another four?
Yes.
Go ahead, Greg.
Thank you.
One more minutes.
Thank you. All right, now I'll just groove right through. If so, we could bring in roughly a hundred thousand square feet of commercial space on a parcel already chosen, restaurants with outdoor seating, north end market concept in Columbus, grill masters, food trucks. Let's talk about affordable brick and mortar. We want you to succeed. Sunday's best shopping, DSW, his or her clothing, Alta Beauty, Panda Express, a darn good steak joint, Office Max, urgent care. You dream it, we can bring it. OCD has the skills and we are ready to get after anything and everything the community wants and needs. We chew up problems and spit out the best solutions. Sorry. If that's sparking an interest, how about doing three or four levels of condos on top of this with geothermal heating and cooling with gas backup, the choice of either gas or electric cooking, and solar panels on the rooftop, hundred units per level, four hundred total, possibly could be apartments or offices mixed in as well, with below ground gated parking garage planted in the center with a green space above it. That has a tunnel going to each structure, four structures total as of now, elevators that have key cards that only go to the level they are coded for or the ground level, ample surface parking surrounding the commercial areas, plenty of green space, bike path around the perimeter and entering into the complex from all directions, trees scattered everywhere for visual buffers. This plan only removes a seventh of the landscape that you've already approved on doing off of Newark Road. OCD is trying to recruit, accommodate the tech individuals that don't want to mow a lawn but have places to go and good food to enjoy. We already have an amazing park system and a sweet downtown. Now we need to manage the human population that grows accustomed to the amenities, not trying to take away from the downtown plan but to help beef it up. If this was accepted, we as a community could grow insanely awesome, insanely fast. Place a tariff on the commercial space created. Help fund all the issues I stated in my intro. Then we move into the OCD version two point R, two point O, excuse me, our community design. OCD wants to relocate the YMCA to another destination for a new community Olympic-sized indoor pool facility. A big, a new bigger rec center away from downtown. Downtown needs housing, revenue producing commercial space instead of recreation. So we purchased their old facilities and build them up, commercial on the bottom, condos, apartments, offices above to the height accepted by you, the community. And how about a Top Golf concept beside the rec center? Make a compound of recreation activities with the funding helped by the tariff, adding safe bike passers that reach all school locations. This is just the tip of the iceberg in OCD's playbook. We aim to serve our community's need, not our wallet's thickness. Nick Clark, executive director of Mount Vernon YMCA, was kind enough to take a meeting with me and said it was, sounds very exciting and will put some thought to the extreme vision, but he did mention they are discussing other options as well. We will help in whatever way we can if needed. The only negative thing is, my investors don't care about our community design. They want to make their money and move on. It's just business as usual for them. OCD is introducing this design to you to see if we can come together as a community, use OCD's ideas, and get our heads above water and never look back. If we build it, they will come. Why do we have to struggle through the intel spike? They aren't actually showing up until twenty twenty-five or later. We need to prepare for this now, not become Johnstown and feel like we got caught with our pants down. They can wait until we are ready to unveil our city. London, Ohio is the best example of how to build outward correctly. Our roads are lacking for that strategy. Our design is meant to be built up, not out for now.
Thank you for answering. Just kind of conclude for.
Yeah, I got like one more paragraph.
Okay.
Thank you. New Albany comes to mind. Until we get the infrastructure under control, we will be chasing our tails and letting millions of dollars be funneled out of our community, never to be seen again. Let it soak in, marinate. We will be back in January, bigger and stronger, to discuss further if the response is positive through the holidays. Council, mayor, you have my contact information. I think it's time we all chat face to face and bring Mount Vernon up to a true destination location, number one in the nation, not just number thirty-seven. I thank you for your attention and I bid you all good evening.
Any questions for Greg?
Greg, if you haven't met with Mr. Gocke, ADF, that might be your place to start.
Yes, I have. Yes.
So you've shown him this concept?
I've ran everything through everybody that I could reach.
Where it starts. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, guys.
I know you had a time to speak during the other meeting from Knox pages. Do you have anything else to say since I have your sheet? Did you say it during the regular meeting? You're done? Okay. Well, thank you. We're now moving into legislative portion of the meeting. Council, that agenda is before you. Are there any additions or corrections? Mr. Hill asks you to read these by title and number only this evening. We have no resolutions for third reading. We have one for second reading. That's resolution number twenty twenty-three dash eighty-seven, Mr. Hill.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash eighty-seven, a resolution authorizing the safety service director to accept the donation of property from the Wesley L. Klein Trust and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Harrier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will give this a second reading. I do believe I asked for ten minutes.
Yes.
Thank you.
This resolution receives a second reading. We now move the resolutions for first reading. We have two. The first one is resolution number twenty twenty-three dash ninety-five. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash ninety-five, a resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the city of Mount Vernon to make supplemental appropriations.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take resolution number twenty twenty-three dash ninety-five to its third and final reading.
Second. And moved to second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Seville.
I would like to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash ninety-five.
Second. And moved to second for your adoption of this resolution. Any discussion?
Yes. Mr. Scott, looks like we're going to talk about the merit drug program.
True. Thanks, Mrs. Seville and council. You have two items on your agenda. The first one is five hundred dollars. It's coming by way of mental health and recovery for licking in Knox Counties, directed to our merit drug court program under the jurisdiction of Judge Thatcher. And item two for nine thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty-five cents is coming by way of reimbursement from the Ohio Attorney General for training costs that were incurred during the year of twenty twenty-two for our police department. This is a funding coming back through from the General Assembly on behalf of the training cost that we had for our police officers. I think in your annual reports that you'll see coming out this fall when they're all done, you'll see where those training costs are incurred. And then this is the reimbursement back from the state for those costs. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Final resolution for this evening is resolution number twenty twenty-three dash ninety-six. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash ninety-six, a resolution authorizing the safety service director to dispose of items in the fire department not needed for public use by the city of Malvernham and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take resolution number twenty twenty-three dash ninety-six to its third and final reading.
Second. And moved to second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
The rule suspended. Mrs. Seville.
I would like to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash ninety-six.
Second. Moving to second for your adoption of this resolution. It's time now to discuss fire hoses.
Yeah, we've got to sell some three inch, four inch, and some nozzles for those hoses. And it costs more than a thousand dollars. And Rob, you want to talk about these hoses?
Yes. If council will remember, we previously processed legislation where we had grants to acquire new fire hoses. They have now done that. And now we have the older fire hose, which still has some life and some value in it. And the fire department is asking for the ability to dispose of that and to return the monies to the city treasury.
Fantastic. And it's over a thousand dollars, too.
Yes.
Yeah, that's great.
Well, can I ask, I know we change things so that Terry can make budget adjustments up to a dollar amount. Is there a dollar amount where things like this have to come to us?
Anything over a thousand dollars by the revised code.
So these aren't like a thousand and five dollars, are they? I mean, okay.
No.
Okay, just wanted to check.
It's a significant sum.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Mr. Ruckman.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Now we move to ordinances. The first ordinance is ordinance number twenty twenty-three days forty. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash forty, an ordinance to amend certain provisions of the codified ordinances regarding public notices and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Harrier.
I will give this a second read.
Thank you. This ordinance receives a second reading. We now move to ordinance number twenty twenty-three days forty-one. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance, ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash forty-one, authorizing an amendment to ordinance nineteen ninety-nine dash zero seven to to ordinance nineteen ninety-nine dash zero seven to extend the term of the tax increment financing program for the Koshakton Avenue TIF for an additional thirty years pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Sections five seven zero nine point forty B and five seven zero nine point five one, authorizing other related actions pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Sections five seven zero nine point forty B, five seven zero nine point forty-two, five seven zero nine point forty-three, and related laws, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Halyer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Hill, I'm sorry, but we're going to do this one more time.
Give it its second reading. It receives its second reading and he gets to practice one more time. Next ordinance is ordinance number twenty twenty-three days forty-two. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash forty-two, an ordinance amending the zoning classification of parcel number seven one dash zero 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 five zero point zero zero zero, also known as Zero Upper Gilchrist Road, from the present zoning of R-1 Single Family District to PND Planned Neighborhood District and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Halyer.
I will give this its second reading as well at the public hearing for the next meeting. Thank you.
This ordinance receives its second reading. Now we move to ordinance number twenty twenty-three days forty-three. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash forty-three, an ordinance accepting the annexation of four point three two five acres, parcel numbers twelve dash five zero zero four six point zero zero, zero, and twelve dash five zero zero five four point zero 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 from Clinton Township into the City of Mount Vernon and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Halyer.
Give this its first reading, please.
This ordinance receives its first reading. Now we move to the final ordinance for this evening. That's ordinance number twenty twenty-three days forty-four. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash forty-four, an ordinance amending section one eight seven point zero two A of chapter one eighty-seven of the codified ordinances of the City of Mount Vernon, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I want to give this its first reading, even though it says declaring an emergency. Can we talk about this, or do I just have to wait? Just have to?
No, we have to wait till the next meeting when it's on.
Okay. I want to get a twenty-minute meeting at the next one.
Okay. This ordinance receives its first reading, and that concludes the legislative portion of the meeting. We now move on to, uh, comments and administration. Mayor Starr.
Thank you, Mr. President and counsel. Um, if you notice, again, we had some more visitors in the audience tonight. I would like to extend a welcome to the Mayor's Youth Leadership Council back here again. Thank you, uh, ladies and gentlemen, for, uh, being here. This year, just so counsel knows, this is what the, the, uh, the youth council has elected to study this, uh, program year. We did have an organizational meeting, uh, in September. Uh, Mr. Gocke came in and talked about regionomics. We also had Mr. Ball in engineering come in and provide the, uh, State Route thirteen corridor, uh, materials that you have all seen, as well as the police department and the, um, courthouse materials to get feedback from, from them as well. This month is attending a city council meeting. Next month, in, in December, we're going to be covering the municipal separate storm sewer system, the MS four program, and why that is so important, uh, for us to maintain compliance with the Environmental Protection Agency, so. Um, and where all, all of these land use things have, they just, no pun intended, trickle down, if you will. Uh, but, uh, that's, that's, uh, one of the things that we have to do. It's, it's, it's not really popular stuff that we talk about, but it's very important. Government procurement. How does the government secure goods and services will be our January, uh, discussion. Zoning code changes and what they mean to young working adults. Um, how is, how is the new zoning code proposal going to affect their lives coming right out of high school and college and so forth? And then, uh, in March, Municipal Planning Commission, how the city plans and executes, uh, growth. Um, in April, probation, what innovative ways does a municipal court help with recovery and, uh, from, from addiction and, and mental health and so forth? So that's, it's different from last year, which was typical police, fire, um, engineering general, uh, topics, and we wanted to get into a little bit more of a, of a, a deeper dive into the local, um, how the sausage is made, if you will. So, anyway, um, really am, am enjoying working with this group again. Um, I'm very hopeful and, uh, hope you, you take the time to, uh, uh, reach out to them as well. So I've challenged them to that they could be sitting in your seats one day. That's what I hope. That would be my, my greatest hope is to see that we get some, uh, youngsters who understand local government and how it works and to be able to, uh, uh, jump right in. The only other thing that I wanted to mention to you is, uh, I'm, I'm not going to rehash everything that I, I sent you in the update, but, uh, Mr. Ball, Mr. Sayers and I met with Representative Kik and Representative Lear today in my office, going over some of the, the, uh, the issues that, that, uh, are among us. And we also did take a tour of the, the levee on the West End to show them what is, you know, what we're up against with that. Uh, so, um, they are aware of it and, and, and so we do have, uh, plans to reach out to other public officials, make sure that they are aware that, you know, this is a priority for us. And so we want to make sure that we can, uh, make, provide a, a safe, uh, neighborhood for the West End there. Anyway, that is all, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Sayers.
Nothing, Mr. President. Thank you.
Mr. Scott.
Nothing further, Mr. President.
Mr. Braun.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Mrs. Woods.
Oh, thank you. Um, just two things. Everybody, please have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Enjoy it. We have a lot to be thankful for. And perhaps I missed this memo, but what happens to our second meeting in December since it falls on Christmas?
Meet on Wednesday.
Twenty-seventh.
Because they have a holiday on.
Okay.
Their Christmas Eve is, and, and Christmas are both holidays, so we, they, city hall is closed on Monday and Tuesday, so we meet on Wednesday.
Thank you. I knew I missed the memo. Just trying to catch up.
I thought it was on Tuesday.
I'm glad we had this discussion.
Yes, because I'll be here Tuesday.
Well, you have to use the key pass to get in the door, but no one else is going to be here. I'll bet you.
Thank you. We'll have a meeting.
I'll go home.
That's all. Thank you.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. First, I want to thank, um, the residents for voting for me again and giving me another two years to work for you. I very much appreciate that. Um, and I just found out I won't be here on a Tuesday. I have to come on a Wednesday. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Ruckman.
No comment.
Mr. Severns.
Yes, uh, Mayor, I don't know if you mentioned Jeff Dur. Does everybody know him?
I did. I'm sorry. No. Jeff Dur is, is our recreation. If you, if you don't know who Jeff Dur is.
Yes.
He's our recreation director.
No comments.
Welcome, Jeff. But I also want to thank our veterans. Um, I would go out on a limb and say that we do not appreciate those who have paid the price for us enough in this country, and we need to really give that more thought. Thank you.
Mrs. Keener.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to say happy Thanksgiving to everybody, uh, and to remember that November twenty-fifth is Shop Small Saturday. A lot of the downtown businesses, uh, really do some great promotions, and it's a fun day out. And then we also have the Christmas parade, November twenty-sixth at, uh, three forty-five. Will there be a Santa? We don't know if there will be a Santa. I'm sure there will, children, be a Santa. Uh, and then five o'clock.
I didn't know. William, help.
And then at five o'clock, there will be the lighting of downtown, uh, which, uh, Experience Mount Vernon Group worked on that today. So, um, after Thanksgiving, come out and enjoy our downtown. That's all. Thank you, Mr. President. There is a Santa. He is among us.
There's Mayhem.
I don't know if I can follow up, possibly getting rid of Santa. I want to, uh, wish all veterans a happy, uh, Veterans Day that just passed, and, uh, all of my fellow Marines around the world, a happy birthday to the Marine Corps, ten November seventeen seventy-five. When you absolutely, positively need something destroyed overnight, those are the fellows to call. Um, and, and young ladies to call as well. So, thank you, uh, Mayor, and, uh, Brian, and the, all the folks who've been working, uh, not just to do the survey on the levee in the West End, but getting the communication out. Um, I appreciate the, the efforts to get that communication out. And, uh, we've talked about how to, you know, getting the public notices out, um, and how that's become more difficult, but, uh, getting them out on the social media, uh, was, is good work, and I appreciate that. Um, also appreciate the good continued work on the safety, uh, over by the Career Center with the Crosswalk, and, uh, the work that Brian and Quentin are doing on that. So, thanks all, and thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Thank you. Mr. Halyer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I got a few, so I'll be quick. Cheryl, I've worked next to my boss a lot, but I never had my boss looking over my shoulder. Saying, he's been leaning.
He doesn't reach short hands.
I need to have to look over. I know we have a lot of meetings scheduled for, uh, committee. I would like a ten-minute committee meeting to discuss the future video in our meetings and try to straighten out, um, what's going on.
By the way, we don't have live video tonight. It will be streamed tomorrow. Apologize for that.
It'll be up tonight.
It's on now?
No, it'll be up tonight.
Be up tonight? Okay.
Maybe we talk to utilities and the other candidates don't seem to have an issue with video. I don't know what it is. We can wait. I'll give you time to think about it. We need a plan. Anyhow, um, and this is not something that just came up due to the emails we got, because you've heard me ask, talk about this before, but I'm requesting any legislation that does not have to be an emergency, um, do not have a declared emergency in it. Um, especially anything that has to do with zoning, land use, and annexations. I don't know if we need legislation for that, but I, um, I have brought this up before, and now the public's starting to speak about it as well. Um, I have three pieces of legislation that I will amend to remove it, and it just takes more time for counsel. It's my part to not to forget to do it. Um, and I think it's, it's a right for the public. It doesn't have to be an emergency. It shouldn't be on the paper. Um, I thank you for that. Hamtramck and Main Street, I sent out an email. I did get a response from Mr. Henkel. Um, we removed the light a few years ago. The traffic study was done. Um, at the time, um, there was a business in the old funeral home that I don't think has the parking that we do now. Um, Tom, Mr. Henkel sent back an email saying that there'd have to be another traffic study done. Um, I don't know what that involves, how feasible it is. I wish Brian would have stayed. Um, and I know lights are expensive. I think we've had one accident there in, through, in the last three weeks. Um, if I remember reading through Knox Pages in their police reports. Um, it's, I traveled, Amber mentioned the same thing. It is very, very difficult with the amount of cars parked up right to the Hamtramck Street on either side to be able to see, um, what's coming either direction. Um, I'd appreciate maybe looking into that possibility. It'd be blocking out the last two parking spaces, one on each side of Hamtramck. Um, it is, it is an issue. You, you've got the uphill incline, plus you're looking at cars parked on both sides, and now I'm told that if the trash cans are sitting out on the front curb, it's a problem as well. So, um, I'd like this to be maybe part of your meetings coming up. Um, last but not least, I had somebody come in from Grange Avenue today, said, "I thought we'd be notified in a better manner of when they're going to start on Grange Avenue than when the equipment, the equipment showed up." And I said, "What are you talking about?" And he said, "Well, I hear we're starting the Grange Avenue sewer project in two weeks." I believe you got a phone call about that, Todd?
I did not.
Well, maybe called engineering. Um, he said he called city hall after seeing the equipment, um, being parked and asking what's going on. Um, he's told that we're going to start the Grange Avenue project in two weeks. Does that sound like anything you've heard?
I'm not aware of that. We can, if he communicates with us, we can.
Well, what I, what I'm suggesting is maybe we communicate with them.
It is going to happen this fall, from what I understand from.
The question, and I know we had a, a public meeting on this, maybe two, I don't know. But the problem is, we were told it was going to happen in the future. And I think the, the people had a very good question is, where's it starting? Are we going to limit our parking? Is it only, you know, are we going to be able to travel? I think, I don't know how you want to do it. It's, it's in our area. I'll go hang, I'll go talk to the people. But if there's information we can give them on what's happening with this project and parking and all that, I think it's the best thing for the city to do. Like I said, I can drag him along with me. We can help. Did you have a comment?
Uh, yeah, well, we definitely will follow up with, with this neighborhood. And I think, counsel, you have mentioned these things before, Mike. I, I know. Um, and we're to the point now where this is indicative of, uh, people wanting more services. They want to know more what's going on from the local government, and it's more than just each one of us trying to do more or trying, "Oh, let me, let me do this," because we have dozens of interruptions every day that get in our way. And so this may be the time when we need to really look at a central communications department, someone that, that handles all these things in support to all of these, all of our different departments, um, and can put things out on social media, can put press releases out, can put, um, uh, any notifications to different, different, um, citizens who might subscribe to our, uh, citizen, uh, resource management, uh, software platform and so forth. Something, it's, it's to the point where we're just, we're out of bandwidth, and we need help, um, with our communications. Todd is my assistant, and he spends about fifty percent of his time working for counsel as my assistant.
So we call him less, that would drop it down to forty.
Anyway, um, so it cuts in to when, when I get, when I can have Todd reach out and call people or to put press releases out or so forth. It's something we really need to consider because people are going to require more services, not less. And it's not a question of us working harder or trying to work smarter. We're just out of bandwidth. But we will follow up with Grange Avenue, um, and very sorry for the, the, the stress that they might be going through for that, so.
No, there will be. I mean, you're going to be tore up all winter.
If I could, if I could add on that. Uh, you know, there, there are numerous projects going on in Engineering and in the Streets Department and in Utilities. Um, we'll work with the Engineering Department and all these departments to, uh, create a more robust way of communication with, with citizens, whether that's online, on social media, through postcards, through knocking on doors. I mean, that's the way that they're doing it. You know, just foot equity out on the West End with the, with the survey project. But, uh, on top of that, you know, as we go into budget conversations, one thing, and this kind of comes back to the conversation about public notices, uh, our website is charitably lacking. Uh, that will be something that we explore. We've already had conversations with a couple vendors about that, that revamp, and we're going to need that if that's, if that's the avenue that we pursue for that ordinance. So, that'll be another, another means that people will know that when we have these significant projects that are going to come up, where people are going to be, you know, inconvenienced by that work,